We've used them in the past, we'll build a detention pond, or we will have a stream buffer that's fifty feet. Those solutions of the past are not working. Roswell has taken a completely different approach, and they're actually improving their water quality. The Roswell engineer, listen, Johns Creek, I've talked to her. We need to engage her, see what she's doing, and she's using a much more engineering, science-focused approach to actually accomplish water quality improvement.
And the last question is, the city charter states the city manager controls the interaction between city council, the mayor, and city staff. And do you think you can be effective following the charter?
As a senior executive, I can tell you, you need to have one person run this organization. He's the operations manager, he's the city manager. We currently have a confusion that needs to be addressed between the roles and responsibilities of the city council and of city manager. The city council is awarded directors. It needs to set policy for this city. It needs to elevate itself out of the fray to focus on the big picture, not get lost in details, and have a long-term plan for this city as to how you actually run an organization. And the city council should main focus should be monitoring the performance of the city manager. And the city manager needs to execute. We've tolerated one city manager for a little too long, and the second city manager for a little too long. We need to understand, and we need to do performance reviews of our city manager and demand performance. This is a city with high expectations. And I've served on boards of directors, and I can tell you, if the board of directors isn't there to be the CEO, the COO of the city. The board of directors is to make sure that we have a good COO, and if he isn't doing the job, then we find another one who can do it better. And we need to be setting expectations for performance and demanding quality in what is done in this city. Any other questions?
That's it for now. You want to pass the mic to Brian? You're all going to get the same question, so... First question I have from the audience. When cities recently formed in North Fulton, they generally outsource many functions. But as they grow, our neighboring cities have brought many functions in-house. At Johns Creek, we outsource our public works department. Do you support bringing public works in-house? Why or why not?
Well, like you said in the beginning, everything was outsourced because it saved money. We were able to function and carry out the duties and the day-to-day operations by privatizing without having to spend the money in every equipment and employee salaries and benefits. As the city has been a business now since 2006, we have seen some of the privatization go away and hiring more city employees. As far as privatizing public works or some of the duties and responsibilities of some of the...
Bringing it in-house.
Bringing it in-house, yeah. I mean, some of that stuff needs to be in-house because you can have better control. You can hire the people you want to hire. You can get a chance to work out a closely with them, and I think they really will serve you better if they answer to you rather than whoever their boss is if they're a private organization. Because sometimes the ideas or their duties and responsibilities can get kind of twisted. If they're city employees, and we can afford it based on the budget, then I think we should try to hire people as we get them, especially if they're good employees and if we vetted them and think that they can be an asset to the city, and they're worthy. So yes, I think so.
Dill? I'll repeat the question. When cities recently formed in North Fulton, they generally outsource many functions. But as they grow, our neighboring cities brought many functions in-house. At Johns Creek, we outsource our public works department. Do you support bringing public works in-house? Why or why not?
I would support bringing it in-house. There are a couple of reasons for that. One is going to be the cost aspect. And the second one is going to be talent. So when you bring it in-house, definitely the cost would come down. The second aspect is going to be the talent. So if you have the resources and people with that skills, we will be able to use them in other areas too. So rather than just focus in one aspect, we will be able to use them in other areas. So cost within the department, if you have to go back and get bits and pieces of work outsourced, I'm aiming for that one. But again, whole department, why? We should be able to do it in-house, and just small pieces of work can be outsourced. So we would have more productivity. Most from the cost point of view, it will go down. The talent also, you could be able to retain. Thank you.
So Royce, cut to the end of the question. Do you support bringing public works in-house? Why or why not?
I support renaming the public works departments the facilities department. From an executive perspective, I believe that we should have any continuing day-to-day operations performed by the city staff. So if you know that there's a function that's going to go on forever, that should be in-house. Now, if you're conducting projects where you're going to build something, you're going to execute a project, if you have something that has a life cycle to it from beginning and end, I believe that what works best are partnerships where there is risk sharing. That means that your partner promises to do the job for X amount of time on a certain schedule, to deliver it to meet the quality of the standards that are expected. So I believe in a shared approach here. But I also believe very strongly that we need to understand how we are sharing risk with our partners. We shouldn't absorb all the risk of these projects in terms of cost overruns and things of that nature. Look at what we're doing on Georgia 400. The state has a partnership with Bechtel. Bechtel says, "I'm going to build this thing for $600 million." They save the city a billion dollars. I mean, they save the state what was going to be a $1.4 billion project, $800 million. So if we motivate our partners, and we have partners that are on the hook and are getting our work because they believe they can do the work on time, on schedule, and on budget, then we should have those partners, and we should share the risk, and they should absorb some of the risk. I don't believe in having a partner, but it's just a timely materials buddy that sends us a bill. And then it's like, hey, well, whatever it costs, that's what it costs. That's not the successful approach in running an organization. Thank you.
We'll start with Brian. Actually, no, we'll start with Dill. We'll go around one. Give you a break. The question is, and I think it has to do with high-density housing. My concern is that Johns Creek will become overpopulated, and schools will be busting at the seams. What can you tell me to make me feel like this is something you take seriously?
That goes back to the development and doing the housing, high-density housing. Right now, if you go back and look at the land use plan, they specifically mention a few areas where it can be high-density. So there is very limited area in that one. So even if you go back and do the development in those particular areas, we wouldn't be going to that level. Going back and looking at the age groups, the millennials are dropping. So right now, even the high schools, enrollments are slowly dropping. I know it's across the county, it's happening, but in the city, it's going down. So we need to go back, and like I said before, we need to attract the millennials. And some of the businesses I went out and spoke to, they're saying that we need to have some kind of a low-housing option. When I say low-housing, I'm not talking about the less probably $200,000 range. But again, they're saying to attract employees for their businesses, they need some kind of affordable housing. I would rather say affordable housing. So that can only be done in the high-density areas, just on the pocket suggested by the comp plan that's been put together by the people. So I would just focus on the high-density areas suggested, which would not have a big impact on the traffic, and it's only a limited area. So that's not going to add too much of the population into Johns Creek. They put a cost problem. Thank you.
Royce, I'll repeat the question. My concern is that Johns Creek will become overpopulated, and schools will be busting at the seams. What can you tell me to make me feel like this is something you take seriously?
I think I told you that my priorities are enhancing our schools, public safety, and our own houses. And that concerns a very real one, in terms of its impact on those things. So I've participated extensively in the development of Comprehensive Land Use Plan. What did we do? We actually reduced the density in most of the city. And we concentrated a little bit of development in mixed-use areas to revitalize some of our shopping centers. And that's sort of the modern trend. What point mall we're putting in mixed-use housing. I'll tell you however, that we have nobody clamoring at our door to build low-cost apartments. What we have everybody clamoring at our door is to build expensive townhomes. So you're going to go from your home to an even more expensive townhome. So what will be built in Johns Creek is driven by the developers in large part. The city doesn't build housing. The developers come to us. We've put together a Comprehensive Land Use Plan, which has been put together with the input of the city, to say what is our vision for the city. On city council, your job, when zoning cases come up, is to balance all these interests. To say, I have a community voice here in the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. I have the voice of the developer. It says, "This is what I think I can do here." And then we need to balance that and say, "Is this realistic and appropriate for our city?" And that's what I would do if I was on city council.
Brian, I'll repeat it because it's a long question. My concern is that Johns Creek will become overpopulated, and schools will be busting at the seams. What can you tell me to make me feel like this is something you take seriously?
Well, my folks just stated, and we'd be glad to have to take a look at and keep our eyes on the comp plan, trying to reduce the density there, trying to make sure that what we do makes sense as far as planning, land use development, and look at some of the areas that are lighted or areas that are not mixed-use here in the city to try to develop those areas that's already in existence and try to get economic development from there or rather try to create something different. Where we know if you build, the people will come. So we know that, and if developers continue to build, the people will come. So we just have to keep our eyes on it to make sure that our schools are not first at the scene, and the traffic is, it isn't worse. Because we know what our infrastructure can stand. So we have to make sure that it is balanced, and have to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do as city officials to make sure that doesn't happen. Thank you.
Give it to Royce, you have one. This new question. Any plans to boost revenue for Johns Creek by building a mall like Avalon or Halcyon? Can you answer that?
This goes to our ten-year financial plan. You know, we don't even forecast our revenues going forward. So we are not even planning for what our sources of revenue are going to be in the future. We just look one year ahead. That's not a plan we get anywhere. If we plan to provide the services our city needs, we need to have a plan that looks at our revenues and all the different sources. Where those sources are going up or going down, whether they're a burden on our businesses or not. We don't want to get carried away. We're taxing everybody to generate revenue. There is a seminal change ongoing right now in the business world, and we need to understand that. Online shopping has changed the world. What we think is the shiny penny will not be the shiny penny five years from now. As you look at business and retail, historically, we used to have downtown shopping. We had strip mall and, you know, big-box stores. Johns Creek was developed in the era of strip malls and big-box stores, by the way. And now we have the popular destination shopping, Disneyland shopping, I call. How long that fad will last, I don't know because the online shopping area is here. I can tell you that my street, Amazon goes up and down my street every single day. So what the future holds, we don't really know. What we do want to do is provide an environment that is attractive to business and meets our needs. However, we don't want to balkanize ourselves and say, "Well, everybody in Johns Creek is going to only shop in Johns Creek." People in Johns Creek go to Halcyon and shop. They go to Avalon and shop. All these businesses depend on a much larger base than our city. So we have to be careful that whatever we put in our city will be self-sustaining and doesn't end up being under a district mall.
Brian, I think you didn't get this question yet, correct? Or is it Dill?
It was a new question.
Yes, a new question.
Did we get everybody?
No, I'm number one on that.
Okay, sorry. So Dill got it. Any plans to boost revenue for Johns Creek by building a mall or a mall like Avalon or Halcyon in Johns Creek?
We need to look at that in a different angle. Rather than just boosting revenue, we need to give a reason for the millennials flight. The previous question was the schools will be overcrowded. No, that's not the problem that we are looking at. If we don't go back and nurture the millennials and give them a reason to settle or move into Johns Creek, we would lose the things that we're proud of in the high schools, like the quality in the best schools. We would lose those things. So to nurture that, we need to come back and have some activity in Johns Creek. It may not be as big as Halcyon's or Avalon's, but we need to focus on the city, around the city hall. Like I mentioned before, build an arts and culture center, community center. Once we focus those things, like we will have more activity, and our target should be balancing the revenues. Rather than having that whole thing on the residence, we need to shift some of those things onto the businesses. That's the only way we can do that is come back and have a unique identity for Johns Creek and give the people the reason to stay in Johns Creek. The way it's going on, if we go back and ask our kids or the grandkids, would they want to move out to Johns Creek? I would say, most of them might come back and say, "No." So if you go back and build it, the construction or the development of the Johns Creek in the forward-looking directions and get them ready for the future, we should be able to address both the revenues and the tax burden shifting a little bit onto the business side too. Thank you.
Brian, you need to repeat that?
Yeah.
Okay. Any plans to boost revenue for Johns Creek by building a mall like Avalon or Halcyon in Johns Creek?
Well, I think we have to, like Ross brought up a few minutes ago, have to look at the planning part. In order for the city to move forward, we need to have a strategic plan, three, five, ten-year plan. And we need to try to execute that plan by having goals and objectives and measures so we can figure out which way we're going or if it's even feasible for us to do that. So if we don't have a strategic plan in place, it'd be kind of hard for us to just go from zero to ten or from nothing to something. So we got to have a strategic plan. We got to have goals and objectives in order to have those measured those better. And in order for economic development and economic growth, we need to be attracting new businesses, whether it's energy companies, whether it's small businesses, and try to just adopt some of those issues that the government has for small businesses. That's what we need here in Johns Creek for economic development, for economic growth. We need to be attracting new businesses. If you look at the malls that people are building, they're not the type of malls that we traditionally think about. They are more open-air, where you have shops and you have stores. So having a place like Tech Park or some of these shopping centers in Johns Creek that are not viable now, that are empty, I think that's something we need to take a look at. But we need to have that development. We need to have that view as part of our strategic plan. Whether it's short term or long term, we need to be doing that in order to move the city forward.
Okay. We'll start with Dill. Yeah. Dill, what do you see as your duties for serving in city council? How long do you think you will need to spend on those duties each week?
That's a good question. Somebody did think about the city council, what they're doing. So that's, I like that question. Like most of you know, this is a voluntary work. So technically speaking, there's only going to be like a couple of meetings a month. But preparing for those meetings and interacting with the residents, so that's more going to be like a full-time job. The responsible device, we are the voice for the Johns Creek residents. So we should represent their views and their interest and take Johns Creek forward in direction. Preserve today and prepare for tomorrow. Thank you.
Royce, I'll repeat for you. What do you see as your duties for serving in city council? And how long do you think you will need to spend on those duties each week?
So I've been observing city council closely for ten years, and I can tell you it's a full-time job. Okay. We've had problems because people have approached it as a little part-time job. It's like, "Oh, I only meet twice a week," and that's it. That's not the job. Job's much bigger than that. The job is actually providing some guidance and some vision for the city and engaging with the community to solve problems. And our current approach of people just serving on council and seeing it as a two-week job, you know, two-week month meeting, doesn't work and will not work. We need some leadership on council and some members on council that will actually devote the time it takes if we really want to improve the performance of this organization. Of the members that are up here, "I'm retired, and I can do that. I can spend forty hours a week and more, if necessary, to do the job." Brian, you've seen both of me in that regard. But I fully recognize that this is a full-time job, and that's what I plan to do. Because I think it's important to all of us and to our city that we be successful and be even better than we are right now. And we can see how to do that, and we can see how to be better. It's going to take some work. It's not going to be this city on council waiting for issues to come before us and just making decisions based on our own personal opinions. We really need to ferret out the issues and focus on the long term and drive this city forward like it should be so that we're focusing on where we're going to be five years from now and not being distracted like happens so frequently in city council. We're fighting the fire in the day. We're not going to drain the swamp if we're busy fighting alligators. And we need a full-time focus in getting this project under control and the city in a better position to move into the future. Thank you.
Brian, you need to repeat? Okay. What do you see as your duties for serving in city council? How long do you think you will need to spend on those duties each week?
Well, just to go back to my experience as a police officer, when we worked as police, we couldn't work by clock. We worked until the job was done. Sometimes we had to work overnight. Sometimes we had to work day-to-day, depending on the importance of the issue or the importance of the job that you're working on. So there's no telling how much time it will take. But I can tell you this, I would be there until the job is done. I have the longer text. I'm dedicated, I'm committed, and it's all about leadership. If you're there working, then I guarantee you the people that are working around you will be there working. They get motivated by you. And that would be my job to motivate, Brian, the city staff, the city employees, to get the job done and just to send a clear message. Like, you know, whatever it takes to get the job done, that's what it takes. And we will not be working by clock. We will not be working by, I guess, whatever they're used to working with, but just send a message on important issues, important projects. We need to work until we get the job done.
Daniel with the mic, we'll go back to you, starting off. Do you support impact fees for new construction to defuse the cost of added traffic/stone water demand on city services?
I would say that's something we can look at and look at what other cities are doing. If other cities are doing that and that we can succeed with it, that's something we can look at. Any kind of way that we can come up with a new way other than taxing the citizens here in Johns Creek to get the storm water taken care of or other issues taken care of? I think it's a win-win situation. We got to be creative. We got to think outside the box. We can't be traditional. We got to move this city forward so that you have to be in the future. We got to come up with better ways of doing that. We have to work smarter, not harder.
Dill? I'll repeat the question if you want. Do you support impact fees for new construction to defuse the cost of added traffic, storm water, and demand on city services?
Impact fee. Technically speaking, it's not going to be free for the development that's already happening because that's going to add to their cost. So the future construction that's happening, probably you could go back and look at that aspect to see if you want to add or not. But the bigger question is going to be the cost of the houses is going to go up once you go back and add it. But in some instances, we definitely need it for storm water management. At least if we do those impervious surveys and come back and add the impact fee, probably down the road, we might not have that big of a problem with the storm water. But for the existing ones that's happening, I would not recommend, but the future constructions, at least that way, the people in the builders would know exactly if they really want to do the project and is there enough legislation that could come back and buy those properties? So they would make a vision based on the impact fee and arrive for the project. Thank you.
Royce, you want me to repeat that for you?
No, I think I remember it. I think everybody's heard it a few times. So sorry to do that. I talked previously about the way you need to be looking forward. You need to have a plan for revenues looking forward and understand our expenses looking forward. Right now, we don't have that. So what do we do with revenues? We sort of guess at what we think we want. We sort of adjust the mileage rate up and down a little bit, do whatever it is that we do. Although we don't have a vision that says, "This is what it takes to run this city." And we haven't communicated this to the citizens. And until we do that, there's not going to be much support for anything. I think it's important for us to paint a picture that says, "This is what we want to do as a city. This is what it costs." Because we're going to find the revenues. From my perspective, businesses don't pay any taxes. They all cascade down to somebody at the bottom. That's going to be the guy who buys the house or the guy who's putting his business in. So we have to take those all into account. We have to take that into account. We can't shift the burden to business. It's going to go back to residential at some point. We need to understand that. But I am supportive of looking at all sorts of ideas for growing revenues in our city so that we can provide better services.
Okay. Could we stop Brian now? He started last. Oh, he did? Okay. Dill, sorry. I'm losing track of the rotation, so I forget. What is your position on, well, let me ask this question. You're both connected. What does your plan to improve security in schools and address vaping and substance use issues? And the other question, it's all tied to, what is your position on closing vape shops in Johns Creek?
Let me go back and address the substance abuse first. It can be addressed in two ways. One is, we need to go back and work with the neighboring cities, counties, and their law enforcement departments to see how we can control the supply. to see how we can control the supply. First thing is, we need to go back and control the supply that's coming in. The second one is going to be addressing the people who are using it. So right now, if you go back, I spoke to a few, few other people up in Emory, Johns Creek Hospital. They're saying that, yes, we are treating the people and reducing them, they're going back. They are coming back again in a few weeks. So then we should go back and address that long-term solution too. So we need to have some kind of a treatment facility on the long term to address the second aspect of that. Well, that's a vaping issue. I know, we need to go back and look at the aspect of increasing the age. That's one thing that we are looking at. The second one is the businesses. Some of the businesses are already grandfathered. So if you go back and enforce some of the things, it may not be as productive as they should be. I know the council is working on reducing the floor space for some of those vape shops. But again, we need to look at the bigger picture and the solution, rather than just going back to the businesses and telling them to just reduce the floor space or those things. So yes, it's an issue that we need to address. I even met with a couple of people from Fulton County School Board. They're saying the substance abuse and the vaping is becoming a bigger problem. So we got to work with the county, Fulton County School Board, and also the Emory Hospital, and come up with a bigger solution. One from the law enforcement aspect of you, and the second one is a frequent point. Thank you.
Royce, you want me to repeat this?
No, I got this one again. I'm jumping up and down here. So out of the three people you see up here, I'm the only one that's been before council to talk about vape shops or vaping in our community. I was president of city council when Linda McCain, our school superintendent, our school board member, came before council and talked to us about the problem that we're having in our schools associated with vaping. Remember that very distinctly, it happened in May. City passed an ordinance to address what I call issue of vape shops, because we don't want to see vape shops, just like we don't want to see bars, apparently. So we passed an ordinance that said, well, no more than 25% of your floor space. Supposedly, your revenues can come from vape shops. But that doesn't do enough to help our schools and our students and our young adults. Let's understand, as I said in my comments last night before council, we're not doing anybody any favors by letting people younger than 21 go buy tobacco or vaping products. The CDC has always recommended that the legal age for purchasing tobacco and vape, which is a tobacco-related product, should be 21. And why aren't we doing that? We are Johns Creek, we have a health initiative. We have a high heart, Johns Creek. We, as a community, don't believe in smoking and vaping. So why are we trying to allow it in our community? We should exhibit some leadership. Raise, like, city attorney has told us, we can do this. We should raise the age for persons who smoke tobacco and vape products to 21 so that our state legislature can go to the state and say, here's the city that did it. We rushed the drugs ahead. Thank you back there. So I'm an advocate. Okay. I've only got 15 seconds, but let me talk about the whole issue of drugs. Takes longer than that. Three main areas when it comes to drugs. Trauma, which leads people to opioids. I think our medical community has to make sure they don't overprescribe. There's lack of purpose, which leads people to find drugs as an alternative because they don't have anything. I think we need to have guidance programs, outreach programs, and use people to help them. And then I end right there. But I can go on.
Ryan?
I think I'm first.
No, Ryan didn't get to talk about this, did he?
No, I'm sorry.